Yeah. I believe it's one of them. Email to his attachment. Yeah.
Probably ready. Good evening, we are reconvened in session at, depending on which one we're following, 7:27 PM. Thank you for your indulgence and are getting started a little bit later. The next item is the superintendent's report, first being student and staff recognition. Ms. Ferris?
Thank you. Tonight, we don't have any student or particular staff recognition, but this month is January is Board Recognition and Board Appreciation Month. So tonight, we have with us our County Judge Executive, Mr. Henry Brannum, who is going to read a resolution for our board members and their service tonight.
Thank you Superintendent Ferris, Chairman Hicks, and board members. On behalf of Mayor Burden, who is in a Board of Commissioners meeting tonight, and he would love to be here with me, we feel honored to get to present this proclamation every year because we do appreciate what our Board of Education members do for Winchester and Clark County, and we understand how important education is to a community to help us further our initiatives. So thank you very much. And with that, I'll read the proclamation. Excuse me, I might be a little short of breath. To all who, to whom this presents succumb, whereas one of the qualities that instills pride in and respect for this community is the reputation of our local public school system. And whereas Debbie Fatkin, Judy Hicks, Michael Kudak, Deanna Wolf, and William Swope contribute greatly to the reputation of our school district by virtue of their service on the Clark County Board of Education. And whereas these decisions, excuse me, whereas these decision makers are responsible for maintaining strong, effective budgetary oversight, high standards for employment, and a safe, well-anchored set of school facilities. And whereas our school board members have demonstrated an unwavering commitment that the children of this community will receive an education that will benefit them for the rest of their lives and set them on paths to being solid citizens of this or any community. And whereas January 2012 marks Kentucky's observation of the contributions by these outstanding leaders and their colleagues across this great Commonwealth. Now therefore, we, Ed Burden, Mayor of the City of Winchester, and Henry Brannum, Clark County Judge Executive, do hereby proclaim January 2012 as School Board Member Recognition Month, and urge the citizens of this community to honor these committed individuals for their service. Thank you.
Also, I'd just like to add that these men and women volunteer countless hours of unpaid time to provide the best possible education for our students, and we want to recognize that in our community. As your elected leaders, they represent you in their continuing commitment to local citizen control, decision-making for our public schools. Too often, the efforts of school board members go unrecognized and unrewarded. So let us take this opportunity to thank them for their service. Even though we are making a special effort in January to show appreciation for our local board members, we recognize that contributions reflect a year-long effort on their part. They are dedicated individuals who are committed to improving student achievement and to striving for the best for all of our students. Please join me as we thank the Board of Education for their service. And Arlene went out and bought them chocolates.
Oh. The goody bags are way beyond any expectation. They are tremendous. Thank you very much, Arlene, and thanks to all of you all, Ms. Ferris.
Thank you all for your service. Appreciate it.
The next item is the fifth month attendance update. Ms. Disney?
All right, for the good stuff. We're presenting this to you a little differently this time in a picture because we're getting a lot of numbers. But if you will notice for 11/12, for a fifth month, that gives you a picture of where we are. Our school that had the greatest, the highest percentage of attendance is Pilot View. And Pilot View, the flag is flying, probably Pilot View. But I will say that there was some very stiff competition.
You know, I couldn't even tell from the graph.
That was that close.
Which one it was. I thought, where is it? And I looked through everything else. Which one got it?
Actually, it's less, less than one-tenth of a percent.
Wow.
So Pilot View, Providence, and Fannie Bush. Those were the top two. And if I could, just make a comment. You do not have this because, as you know, when we submit our items to you, at the school board month, or the fifth month, when it ended, was, we were pushing for time and we'd have to balance everything and that sort of thing. But if you were to look at last year's data, which you do not have, so I'll just take my word on this one, please. If you look at the most improved from last year, that happens to be Fannie Bush. And specifically, at this time last year, they're two and a half percentage points above where they were this time last year. And we met with the attendance clerks today, and Betsy said those phone calls work, don't they? I said, yes ma'am, they do. So again, congratulations to, to all of you. And at this point, last year at this time, as you, you saw on the next, I think Carrie will go to the next one. Our district total at this time last year was ninety-four point four-seven, and at the end of the fifth month this year, we're still there at ninety-five. So that's what we're, our goal is for this year, so we're at ninety-five percent.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you very much. And state and district updates, Ms. Ferris?
Just a couple of things to bring to your attention. Since we have a House Bill forty, you all are probably familiar with, the new statewide evaluation system. I did want to inform you that we do have a school that is palleting the evaluation system, which is Pilot View. They were, they asked for pallets and asked people to volunteer, and Pilot View agreed to do that for us. So they are palleting the new professional growth and effectiveness system. Our teacher participation in this pallet is not about performance, but rather the function and performance of the new system. The conditions to be in this pallet are that they must volunteer, which they did, they must be a first-year teacher, not be a first-year teacher, are in a current evaluation year, and not under corrective action plan. There must be at least three teachers across grade levels assigned to the pallet and a peer mentor. So the teachers at Pilot View, who are part of the pallet, are Tanya Duncan, a third-grade teacher, Stacy Watson, a fourth-grade teacher, and Elizabeth Valiogle, which is a special education teacher. And the peer mentor is Nina Sally. I know you all are familiar with all of these teachers. You've heard their names over and over again. Great, great teachers out there. The work centers focus around discussion, discussion meetings in the district that are facilitated by an assigned integrated design team from Kentucky Department of Education. In October, the school principal and the teacher and the central office administrator, who is Pat Rosenthal, attended a training on the teacher effectiveness framework. And at this time, the measures are two, they're five-fold. It's not just about student achievement, but they'll look at student growth, student voice, parent voice, professional growth, self-reflection, peer observation, and observation. So we're excited that we're in on the ground floor with the new evaluation system. We've been talking about it. I talked to the staff about it a year or so ago and said it's on its way. So this is the pallet. And the goal is, if you look at House Bill forty, you're our legislative contact, you probably saw this bill, that this development in partnership with KDE, KEA, KSBA, and KASA, that's Kentucky Education Association, the School Boards Association, and the Kentucky Association of School Administrators are all partnering with this. And the goal is that this plan will be developed for the 2013-2014 school year. So we're excited that we have a school that is involved in it on the ground floor. So we are hoping that we will get a leg up on everybody else. So I wanted to share that with you. We are very excited about that opportunity, and I don't think we could have picked a better group of teachers to go through this. And of course, the principal will be on the ground with this, and Pat will be our contact person for this. And also, Dr. Kudak, I don't know, you probably have had some legislative contact.
Assuming they don't change the legislation, so.
Right, okay.
As far as I know, that legislation, well, they haven't done much of anything to legislature yet. Legislature acts, argue about voting district boundaries, but that's guaranteed to make it out of committee because Carl Rawlins is the committee chair, and that's, that comes from his education committee. So generally, a bill that's authored by the committee chair is going to make it to the floor. So we'll see what happens after that.
And there are several other education bills out there. We will keep you informed. What I try to do is I send that information out to the entire administrative team so that they are familiar with what's going on during the legislative session. So we're excited about that. We've got a career and tech bill out there as well that we're looking at very closely. And so you all get that also through KSBA services. If I get any more information, I'll share it with you as I get it. But those were the two things that I did want to share with you tonight.
How many are involved in the pallet?
I think there's, is it fifteen school districts?
Yes.
I think it's about fifteen school districts that are involved. And it's been a lot of legwork with this. It's been about two years coming. It is part of the race-to-the-top application. If you all remember when you signed off on it, the state did get about seventeen million dollars through the last race-to-the-top money. So this is part of that. One of the things, when I talk with our two legislators, Donna Mayfield and RJ Palmer, they ask if I had any concerns. My concern is that we have to make sure, as I always say, that we provide enough professional development for the people that are going to do the evaluating. That's the key. They've got to know what it is they're going to be evaluating the teachers on, and the teachers know what that evaluation's going to look like. That's, that's the major concern. We need to make sure we got enough professional development. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is to consider approval of the Clark County Public Schools Corrective Action Improvement Plan, as far as we're involved.
The Clark County School District is a Title I school district, and as such, we are under corrective action because of the highly qualified NCLB report. And because of that, the state requires our corrective action plan to have seven components in it, or we are to address these seven things. Basically, they involve making sure that we have something in there that addresses the teaching and learning needs of those that are underachieving, measurable goals and targets for all of our groups in our school system, strategies that we build in to strengthen instruction in our academic areas, extended learning time after school, before school, during the summer. We must have something in there about that. High-quality professional development for our teachers and our instructional staff, and strategies to improve effective parent involvement in our schools. So those, those six things are required to be in this plan, which I have given you two documents. The first one is our corrective action plan, and seven, and the second document is our plan that we will be monitoring throughout the school year, which contain those six things. Basically, our, our plan has three components to it. It has elementary, secondary, academic performance. It has college and career readiness, which is required by the state to have some part of college and career readiness in it. And the last component that we have is the learning environment. Basically, within those components, we took that part after studying all of our data through all, not just the data for the CCT, but our AP data, our ACT data, Explorer and Plan data, all the data that you've seen throughout the year, to come up with our elementary and secondary performance component, and also our college and career readiness component. What we did was divide those components into three areas, curriculum, instruction, and assessment. Those are the three things that happens in our school district all the time. So all of our components are divided into those three areas. And the last, which is learning environment, our last one that does not deal with as much data, we did use the TEL survey as our database and incorporated what was said in the TEL survey into our learning environment component. And so did the schools. They took the TEL survey and put that into their, the things that were said in their schools are into their components. What we are going to do with this, this action plan is basically follow it month by month in our administrative meetings and our cabinet meetings. We will have a monitoring section, which you have seen, which we have not had before. We have an implementation section and a monitoring section. And we will be looking at that on a monthly basis and looking at the components and looking at the dates on which all of our strategies have to be completed and making sure that they are completed on those specific dates, and that we follow through with the impact. And that's one of the things that we said had not occurred in some of our previous plans. We're going to look at the impact this actually had on student learning. Rather than just saying completion, we're going to look, what did it do? What did, what did the data show that this strategy did for these students? And that takes it one step further than what we have normally done in the previous years. So basically, we turned in our corrective action plan to the state, and it was approved on December thirtieth, December twentieth, sorry, not December thirtieth, December twentieth. And now I'm coming to you to approve the district plan that we will use throughout the year, and we will be coming back to you to share with you. I do think this is a good plan because it is centering around the three things that are most important to the school district, which is curriculum, instruction, and assessment of our students. And it involves the teachers and involves all of our data that you've seen throughout the year. I'd be glad to answer any questions about the corrective action plan that you have. But that is basically our plan, our strategies, and all our activities center around curriculum, instruction, and assessment. Yes?
I have a comment, a question.
Okay.
A suggestion. So, first comment is, I'm very glad that you were able to use the TEL survey data to look at the classroom environment of learning, which I think was important. As I went through this document, I saw there's a lot of things that are done, a lot of personnel, a lot of resources are being put into place to try to better the education of our students. And if things like classroom discipline breakdown, or there are some other issues that deal with the environment of learning, I think all of this goes for naught. So I'm glad to see that there is part, important part of this plan that has something to do with that. And that was something that really jumped off the page of the TEL survey. So I'm glad to see that's being addressed. Question would be, when I looked at, including strategies from effective parental involvement in the school served by the district, I saw some things that would probably appeal to parents of our children that are probably natural leaders and they're interested in, you know, being leaders within their school. And I think that's fine. I think we need to support parents who want to be more involved in the schools. However, we noticed that, you know, some of our more at-risk students have parents that, you know, would not want to be involved or may need to be sought out. So I was going to, my question would be, what are the items in the plan which are going to address the ways that you can get all parents involved in the school? Because we don't just need the involvement of a couple of parental leaders, we need the involvement of all parents to make our schools successful.
Well, one of the things I, I think that we've talked about is basically our communication with parents. That's going to be a big thing in there. How do we communicate with parents besides being on committees, going into schools? One of the things that we obviously have put into place, and that's just a small thing, but the, basically updating the websites, having the school messenger, where we call the parents and letting them know what's going on. If something's happening in the school, then we, then every, every parent gets a call. Basically, we also have, we're getting out more information, like more brochures, pamphlets are going home, individual letters from the district going home to parents about certain things that are going on at the high school. We're supporting the other schools, the district is, far more than we had before as far as communication efforts. And I think we're trying to reach every parent by making sure that every, every child gets the letter and that it goes directly to the house rather than in the hands of the kids to go home.
I'll let Barbara kind of expand on that. She's kind of coordinating that component.
We're, a couple of things we're doing real specific is when you, we're talking about at-risk students, there, if you'll notice in the plan, there's some, we're very, we're actually pinpointing those parents, asking them to make sure that they are serving on committees, going, if you will, instead of putting out a blanket invitation.
Right.
That, that sort of thing. We're offering, the district is going to work with the Pritchard Committee and fund Parent Leadership 101, and making sure that we have a representative from every school that is fostering leadership within that building, and then hopefully, you know, that goes out. That's, that's a two-day training, very intensive, and we're working on getting commitments for folks who will be involved with that process. As, as Pat said, we've put together, I have several how-to that will go to parents as working with students with academic achievement. We're making a very concentrated effort. If you'll notice, we've also, will be putting into each of the schools, the district will be funding a computer. We realize that some of their parents don't have internet access, and so therefore, it will be available to them, excuse me, at a station at the school, you know, and we're, I think we've also got in there that will be at all open houses and/or transition meetings to let our parents know about IOPs, letting our parents know about parent ports. We're trying to do those sorts of things in order to make sure that our folks understand the opportunities that are out there available for their children and for them to be, to work with their children.
We also have the, this year, that's new, the parent council.
Yes.
That meets with me and my staff every other month. And part of that parent council, we've had our first two meetings, and it's gone really, really well. And we have a representative from every school. And one of the things that we're focusing on is the new, the document that came from KDE called the missing piece, the puzzle for proficiency. And so what we're doing at this meeting, which is Thursday, we're having that group of parents to work through that document. And what we want them to do is talk specifically about Clark County and come up with some strategies, just like you were saying, how we can reach our parents that are not as involved. So they're starting that work on Thursday.
And also, they'll have this document, this learning environment piece, and the three objectives. And we're going to work with how, matching that document with the missing piece of what are we doing in Clark County and what can we do for engagement.
That is a national crisis, getting more parents involved in our schools. I had an opportunity to do some training on that a couple of months ago in Lexington and had a room full across the state of districts that were there. And it's an issue for all of us, you know, we, those parents that we would like to talk to, it is very hard to get them in. We have tried a lot of things. We have gone to churches on Sunday. We have tried, we have tried a lot of out-of-the-box things. I send personal letters from me to the home address. So we're reaching out, trying to do several things, and it's just, it's a work in progress. That, that's a difficult piece, is trying to get those parents at the table.
I'm sorry. Oh, you finished. I didn't mean to interrupt. I'm sorry. I was just, I just wanted to comment on, as a parent for the group that you're speaking of, I, for the at-risk kids, I actually, I am the founder of a support group for parents of special needs kids. I am also a mentor in the AMACH program for children who have parents incarcerated. And speaking, I have a lot of contact with those kind of parents. I would be more than happy to help you all in any way I can be able to reach out to those parents because I do have that connection with them. So I would love to just be able to help in any way that I could.
And, and our counselors and frisky directors were all trained last year with, with Michael Jackson from the AMACH program.
Right, yes, yes.
We've, we've gone through that, and we're also involving our frisky directors more with more home visits and more parental contact, and they're receiving training, and we meet every other month to discuss all of that.
You can give Barbara your number and contact information?
I'm sorry.
Give Barbara your number and contact information?
Yes, ma'am, I will. Thank you.
Thank you.
On the request.
All right.
Which you probably would appreciate, but this district has been in corrective action for a long time. And you see, I've only been on the board a year, but I saw this plan last year, and here it is again, and, you know, it looks different from the last one, compared and contrast of the two. But I would like to have a standing item on the agenda, report on progress for this plan. It's very important, okay? I think we need to make sure that there is progress being made. We're writing all these things down. I think it's a good plan. I think it's doable, but I think we, the board, need to hear about progress. If there's no progress, that's fine. Tell us why. We need to know because.
I agree.
We, as the board, need to direct additional resources towards that, and there's no progress in these areas.
Sure.
If we're doing great, we need to know that, too.
Monthly?
Monthly. How long have we been in corrective action for?
Since the inception of No Child Left Behind. Ten years. And I will say that if it's monthly, if you look at some of the implementation dates, there may not be a lot of data, but we can say that when we come on a monthly basis. So Arlene will put that down as a standing agenda item, and if it's nothing, then we'll say that we haven't had time to collect data. If we have, then we can share. Good idea. Thank you.
Pat, on number two, it said, lack of vertical line of K through twelve essential curriculum into the content areas. Can you give me a description of what we're doing to?
We have worked all year on vertically aligning our curriculum from K through eight, really, basically, and because nine through twelve is on the Quality Core and they're doing the ACT, on setting up our pacing guides, our lesson plans, our mastery checks for each of our units, and writing our units. We are down to, we finished the last units the other day, and we are, and the last mastery checks, and we're finishing up unit five and unit six. It has been a work in progress, but we had to start out with the teachers understanding the standards first. And that took a lot of training. And then we started, and we come up with a core group of teachers that have been working on it, and then they have taken it back to grade level meetings, which they did in January, and they will do the day after closing day. Will be a teacher, district-wide teacher day, where they will look at the last three units, go back through them before summer, make, so that we can make the changes and get them up on the district website so they will be able to use them for the summer to prepare their lessons for next year. So that's where we are at this point. We are just about finished. Everything is ready to go out. We're just, we've got to have some more feedback on the last three units, and we'll be ready to go for next year.
That was one of the major concerns, is a guaranteed viable curriculum. If you don't know what that is, it's going to be hard to do anything else.
Right.
That has been an issue, I think, for us. So we have had that real discussion, and we've had a lot of teachers, we've had a lot of principals come together, and I'm feeling a lot better about it. It's not there yet. We have had a lot of opportunities for teachers to give feedback, and as Pat said, it has been a work in progress because of the new standards. But we're also going back to core content four-point-one to make sure that that is also aligned to where we want to go. I think the science standards are probably going to be on the table in the next few months. So then we'll be back trying to deconstruct those standards as well. But we're feeling a lot better about it. I think the principals can attest to that. They're feeling a lot better about the curriculum being more viable and guaranteed. But if you don't have a guaranteed viable curriculum, it doesn't matter what else you do. So that's been a major, major focus of ours since I've been here. So we've been focusing on it.
Spending a lot of time, and the teachers can tell you, if you say something to about one standard, they can spread it out just back to you. I mean, they know them backwards and forwards. I was with some teachers this afternoon, I was amazed at how well they know the curriculum and what they have to teach. So that has been a really good year. It's been a hard year, but we're working through it and doing a good job with it. Teachers are bound into it, and it's, it's going, you know, so.
What are we doing to, maybe it's more of a staff, a principal question, but the lack of high expectation for all students. I know that that's kind of been a struggling point with some staff, and how we get them on board to understand that, that that is something that we, we have a high expecta, we want that, that's a demand for us.
Honestly, one of, one of the things I think that this, these standards do is to set high expectations for all students. Because the standards themselves make your task and your activities that you give students much more rigorous. The tasks, the, the standards themselves are much more analytical, and so you cannot hand a child a worksheet to do something that says, provide textual evidence that you're, that this is a comparison contrast, it just, it won't work. So I think what we're trying to do is focusing on the activity or the task that's given to the student. What you give the students to do sets the expectations for students. So we're looking at that, and, and basically, I don't know, anybody want to comment, or anybody else want to jump in there? No?
No jumpers tonight?
No jumpers, huh? But I do think we're working on that with our curriculum, because I do think the tasks that are coming out and the mastery checks that we're giving show them that we expect them to measure up to that and that we're trying to help them.
I think also that we do the monthly progress monitoring here at the office with all the student achievement staff from here and with the principals every month. And what has happened is, we've modeled for principals, and now principals are doing it with teachers. And I think when you target those specific kids and you have those real conversations about data, then teachers understand that, what the expectations are, and the expectations are that we get every kid to proficiency. And I think they, they understand that. That's what they come to work to do every day, is to make sure that we're giving every kid our very best. And when it doesn't happen, then we, we see those results. And what they do, they have those conversations, collegial conversations in their buildings, and then they are reteaching the content, they're doing flex grouping, because it's as because it's as important to them to get the kids there as it is to us. And so those conversations have changed. And I think we're more focused on student outcomes than we've ever been.
They are, definitely.
Yeah, that is steady. Pat, my questions relate to the gap to goal section. On the, I guess these are in the sub, subgroups pages, I guess it starts on page four. How are the goals for the two eleven, two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve school year established? Particularly when I look at the high school, the current proficiency distinguished percentage, such a reading is fifty one point seven and our goal for two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve is eighty five percent?
We sit down and worked on the, looking at all the data across and as a group and tried to come up with what we thought. On page five and six is what you're talking about?
Four and five, well, it kind of starts on four and then continues on through. But the, the part that I'm looking at particularly is, I guess this is African-American students in, at the high school level. All of those, like math is currently twenty nine point six percent and our goal is eighty percent. How realistic is that when we're, are we really going to? Is that a realistic goal to go from twenty nine point six percent proficient distinguished now or from last year to eighty percent for this year?
Well, let me explain that to you.
I read that one too, and I was like, that's.
Well, it has to be the goal.
Yeah.
Because if it's not, we will, we'll be in corrective action again. Because the goal is eighty percent.
That's right.
So that's established, that's already established.
That's an established goal.
Okay.
And for us not to say that's the goal, we're saying to ourselves, okay, you're going to fail again. It is very, it's going to be tough. And that's why the state has recommended and has required that you have a gap to goal goal for every school across the state. And because we are, we are operating from a deficit for many of our student groups, it makes our job very, very hard. But the goal still has to be that we're going to get them there.
So that goal was established for us? And we are acknowledging that we are accepting that goal despite what our previous performance.
Absolutely.
I don't think they.
Now, let me, let me add to that, is that we are in the process still of hearing from the federal government if we're going to get the waiver. If we get the waiver, then these numbers may change because we won't have A Y P, but we'll have A M O. And if we don't have A Y P, then the goal is going to be to a hundred. And so that might look a little different, but for right now, this is what we have to have in the plan. Does that answer your question?
Yes, 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 thank you. Other questions or comments for Ms. Rosenthal related to the corrective action improvement plan?
I need.
Thank you all for your work on this.
That's just a lot of work.
Ninety pages, I'm impressed.
Yes, ninety pages. It, it took some time to.
It was larger than that. The goal is, Dr. Kudak, is that we get there, right?
Thank you. So your recommendation, Ms. Ferris, related to the approval of this plan?
I recommend that the board would approve the Clark County Public Schools Corrective Action Improvement Plan for two thousand and eleven, actually, to two thousand and fifteen.
I'll make a motion to approve the plan as we're, as submitted.
Motion by Dr. Kudak?
Second.
Second by Mr. Slope. Other discussions? Those in favor of approving the Clark County Public Schools Corrective Action Improvement Plan two thousand and eleven to two thousand and fifteen, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries five to zero. Thank you. And continuing with.
I'm here to give you an overview of the district fall and winter map results. And this is a, our district map data is longitudinal. The same students moving to the next grade, progressing from grade to grade from spring of two thousand and ten to winter of two thousand and eleven in reading and mathematics. Our fall district average for reading, those reading on grade level is fifty seven one and the winter district reading average is fifty seven two. So slight change there. The fall district math average for students on grade level was forty seven eight. However, the winter showed fifty two two, so that was a significant gain in math. One of the, the good things is if you look at third grade reading and you see that there is a gain in third grade reading for those kids that are now in third grade, they, in last year, they went from forty five three to fifty eight three, which is a significant jump. If you look at seventh grade, this year's seventh grade, they went from forty five eight at the end of last year to fifty four two right now. So that's a good jump for those students in reading. And you look at the, actually, and the concern might be the kindergarten kids who are now in first grade, moving from fifty four in the spring to forty five in the winter. And basically what this does is give us data to see where we're going to project for summer school, where our grade is going to be. And that probably looks like it's going to be the grade. That's, unless things change in the next, in, in spring.
Kindergarten? Oh, no, first grade, first grade.
First grade, first grade, yes, uh huh. The other grade that may have some, we might look at is the eighth grade. Basically, that went from in seventh grade at sixty three one in reading to eighth grade, they're, well, they went from sixty three to forty seven and back up to fifty. So that's another little look. So that would be this year's eighth graders and then this year's first graders in reading.
Okay, well, what about fourth, fifth?
They made some fourth graders.
The sixty four nine to fifty six six, from fifth to sixth.
That's sixth grade, that's what my question was going to be too. The sixth grade, is there a, are you looking at that one too?
We did last year, yes. Yeah, we looked at fifth to sixth, if you remember last year, eighth to ninth. And we went with second grade last year, might be first grade this year. But that basically, last year was very successful, that fifth to sixth and eighth to ninth. And those are transitional years anyway. Looking at our math, the second grade students, those are on second grade now, went from fifty last year to sixty four this year, which is a, is a good gain. And our thoughts on the concerns might be the third grade, which stayed at third, fifty, they went from fifty one to forty four, I'm sorry. Looking at my numbers there, fifty one point seven to forty seven and then down to forty four point two, yeah. And the other one is the eighth grade again, from fifty eight down to forty seven. So those are the areas, probably that eighth grade going into ninth and fifth grade and then first grade. And we'll look at it again in spring. We will be testing again March twelfth through the thirtieth, which will be our last test, our spring test. And then we'll look and see, when I bring it back to you, how they are looking. But it, looking from last year to this year, it, it basically brings up specific grades. It probably needs some extensions during the summer. So, do you have questions?
Any other questions related to math or comments? Thank you.
Okay.
Continuing.
The next one that we're looking at is the district report card. And this is the ten eleven year. I was looking at nine, ten too much, I'll go back to you. Basically, all the data that is in here was, is data that you have seen over the year. The only thing that we have added is basically our spending per student, which, you know, every year I, I talk to you about how we calculate this through MUNIS and how we get the spending. And it's basically a calculation sent to us by K D E. We run the reports and then we figure out how much it is per school. And we, it is by school and also by district. And you can see we're a little bit behind on our, our spending. The other thing that we basically add to this report card beside the spending is we add information such as state contests, what our kids have done this year, any, any awards or recognitions we've gotten. All the narratives are current. All the data is like a year. So all the narratives that are in this report card are basically current things that we have put into the report card. The NATE part, we, basically the state added, and that's something you are not seeing because it's a statewide test and it's not done by individual schools, except that last year, we did test Concorde. So we did have a school test that. And then you've seen the A C T. The parental involvement comes from what the schools report and basically just flows into the district. I will tell you that next year you're going to send a new report card because there's a new regulation that went to the state board. And basically how, one of the things that's going to be changed, they're going to change some of the language, obviously. But the A P, Advanced Placement Data, is going in there next year that hasn't been in before. And they're going to eliminate the narratives that we've been putting in. And the, like, state contests are going to be eliminated and percentages of teachers who have professional development. So next year, most of it is going to be data-driven and most of it's going to be uploaded from the state level. And we basically will not be putting in very much information. So it's going to be a whole new card and apparently it, it's, it's a K A R seven thirty five, one forty. And it's pretty much, it comes out of existence Senate Bill one, so they're going to make the changes for that. I'd be glad to answer any questions. It will be on our website as soon as the state releases it. They are shooting to release by the first of February for all schools at the same time, all districts. And it will be linked from our website.
Pat, why was Concorde chosen to do the?
I have no idea. They have done it several times. They just sent us a letter.
They randomly.
They randomly chose, yes. They just send a letter and say, you know, you've been chosen. Concorde's done it several times, though, they have.
And it used to be you could say, yes, I want to, and I don't, and now K D E says you have to say yes.
You have been selected.
Yeah, they have asked us before, but not in the last five years. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay.
And, oh, other questions about the district report card? Okay, continuing on, does it, do you need a pool of that?
Okay, now we are in nine, ten. We're actually in nine, ten now, going back two years. This is the seniors that graduated in, in the year, at the end of nine, ten, May of ten, two thousand and ten. And basically what this does, and I think this is a great report, I like to see it a lot. I haven't seen it, it's been very sporadic since, over the years. Sometimes we've gotten it, and I haven't seen this good, you know, in, for a while. So I was really glad to see it. These are the graduates for ten that went on to college. And all this data comes from the colleges database. As you remember, and I know some of you probably do from my senior transition survey, you remember me asking? Well, the reason they do this is this is valid data. Because when we call kids, I say they think they're going to college and they may and may not. But this is actually coming out of the database of college attendance. And so it has been into, I think this group, I thought the overall college going rate of sixty eight percent was good. I felt like that, I felt like most of them would go to in-state and sixty five percent of them did. We did go to an in-state school. Our, our A C T for that, that class was very good compared to looking at the, the state. Now, remember, the district goes, there's a little bit of difference because of the day treatment is not have its own and so it automatically goes in there. Not that it makes that much difference, but it does a little bit. Basically, I was happy that, and, and surprised, a little bit surprised that the qualifying for free and reduced lunch was at that level. I thought it might be higher than that, but I think that the next one that comes out probably will show that. But that, that you're talking about two years ago. And our keys money was actually higher than the state's, which was good for that. Concerns that I guess would be, you know, your math and your, your number that made benchmarks, your college level readiness.
I have a question about that. Is there any, you know, if there's, I know this comes with the state, but are there any plans to actually look to see who is graduating? Because I would think if you've got sixty eight percent college going, but only forty five percent ready for college level math and fifty eight percent ready for college level English, you're going to have kids take your remedial classes. And as K D E has said over and over and over again, you know, that's your highest risk factor for not getting in college, for not getting a degree.
We actually don't get the, the kids that are in our remedial classes from the, from the colleges. We don't have the graduates, I don't know how, do you know, Delaine, how you get the database?
Actually, they are in the process of working on that longitudinal data system because that was been part of the conversation about three years ago with K D E and C P E. So they're looking at now how that we can track, high schools can track the number of kids who are taking remedial classes and actually are transitioning to degree. And it's in the process. I don't know if it's a year off or two years off, but they've been talking about it when I was at K D E. So I'm thinking it's probably about a year out because there's been so much conversation now with K D E and C P E as to who owns this college graduate. So I, I, I think it will probably be out in the next year, I, I would assume. I can call and see how.
I know our graduation rates for our four-year schools are lower than they should be. So, and, you know, it's, it's, it's nice to say we have sixty eight percent going to college, but the true benchmark of success is actually graduating. And since those numbers are lower than they should be, first you got to get the data. Once you got the data, you can analyze it.
Yes, that's right.
And, and basically they are, the, the data they're using that's saying a college and career ready, as you well know, is the benchmark only on the A C T. That's what they're basing this data on, which is one measure. So that too is kind of, you know.
Yeah, it would be interesting to see, see, okay, this was their benchmark. They didn't meet the benchmark, but how did they do once they were in?
It worked.
Eventually, we're going to be able to see all of that. That's the goal, is they have that longitudinal system where we can actually look at that. It's not there yet, but as I said, it's coming.
And also, you, you know that they, they took the comparable data from the junior A C T. This is not, and they know that kids, some kids took the A C T again.
This is a junior class.
Yes, this is junior. This is a junior A C T. This is not, and they said that they really, they know that they retake the test, but they couldn't compare it once they retook the test. They had, and the K D E wanted them to use the same test, that everybody took the same.
Static data.
Yeah.
And this is the state-required A C T.
And one of the things I was cautioning on too is in the feedback reports is, is that, and according to what I read on Council Post Secretary, that we have to be careful about looking at previous feedbacks because you're talking about different classes. And so we have to watch the feedback reports or just look at the trends more than you do the individual classes because they are different students, you know, and they do that. The other thing I thought was, and I thought this was interesting because we basically call all the students. And I remember over the time it said that on page two, that ninety three percent of them were, started college full-time. And when we had talked to a lot of kids in the last two years, I had noticed that the kids were saying that they were going to school and working, that they were only going that part-time. And so I, I would be interested to see, because that's a trend in the economy and a trend of how things are going, if that changes next year when we see. Because they were saying, and when I saw ninety three percent going full-time, I was really surprised because of what I've heard the kids say.
That's true, and nursing, I mean, you start out as a, these days, very few people are going for a four-year nursing program. You start out as a tech, you work, you get a job, and then you're an L P M.
That's right.
And it takes time, but you're in the workforce the entire time.
Yeah, so I was, and a lot of our students, I thought, would be going more to technical school. Now, we've never had a lot of kids go to technical school, but we've had a, you know, a pretty good amount. But fifty three percent of them are going to a four-year college instead of a two-year college, which I was surprised at that because of the number listed here that were attending a smaller B C T C, that type of thing. Because if you look on the last page, they basically. Because if you look on the last page, they basically look at where the most kids attended, are attending, and BCTC, uh, was the top of the list. And so I was, I was thinking, you know, more, uh, of the four-year, I was surprised that were more kids going to four-year. It said four-year, but yet they've got two-year. Most of our kids went to two-years. I couldn't figure that out, so I don't, I'm not really sure. But anyway, this is a great report. I think it's something we need to, and I hope, um, you know, it'll come out to us every year, and, uh, yearly basis, I, like I say, over the years that I've been here, sometimes I've seen it, and then at some point you had to go looking for it. This year, it came to us, which was a good thing. And so I'm hoping it will show up. And it will, uh, and like we can say, we can look at the trends over the years, because when I surveyed, I was surprised at some of these. Any questions about this?
I really enjoyed that report.
I did too. I thought, I thought it was one of the better ones we've got.
Yeah.
Okay, now let's down to the...
Thank you, yes, now we're still...
I'm still here, okay. The consi... Now, let's leave it there. Consider approval of first reading and revision of policy oh-eight-two-two-one, okay. This deals with the grading specifically, the end-of-course grading for the high school. Uh, the exams, the end-of-course exams, uh, were set by the council at thirty percent. However, at a, after much discussion at a, um, a meeting in December, they have decided to, and a meeting in January for the second reading, they have decided to move the end-of-course assessment percentage back from thirty percent to twenty percent. So this is basically the first reading of the change in this policy, and the council has approved this policy.
Okay, walk us through why we're doing this.
Well, I'd like to have Ms. Bowen.
You know, I attended the meeting, I listened to some of the discussion. Um, one thing that particularly, um, jumped out at me was one of the comments made during the meeting. A teacher indicated preparing all students in my classes for Harvard. No matter what, anything counts, I prepare all of my students as though all students are going to Harvard.
So it wouldn't matter what the...
Right. But if that is the case, the Harvards and the UKs and a lot of schools, when students get there, their end-of-course assessment is going to count about fifty percent, because the only other assessment they had was midterm.
That's correct. That's true.
So, so if we're lowering our thirty to twenty, and then the kids get to college and it's going to be not twenty, not thirty, but fifty, does this help us on our preparation for college and career readiness by lowering this percentage?
Do you want to add to that? I'm passing this one off as I don't have my dollars.
Smart choice.
I think, you know, with, that's a good question. I don't know that I have the answer to that question. What happened was, uh, I guess the council heard a lot of concerns that had been spread to the council. They, uh, we had a special power of work session, where we went through a lot of mathematical scenarios, uh, with different percentages, different types of weighting, as far as this goes. Uh, then we had the meeting in, I guess, the work session, then we actually had the next meeting, and then it was, uh, it wasn't an unanimous, it was not an unanimous decision on the part of the council, but it passed, uh, voted agreed to, to amend that. And, uh, you know, it's, a lot of the changes has happened in high school. You know, typically when we look at assessment, we talk about testing and everything, and I still don't think everybody understands how much the high school has changed. We're in a totally different world this year, and I think if you go across the state of Kentucky, a lot of districts are in shock right now because they really weren't prepared. I do think we were ahead of the curve. Uh, we've talked about this last year, and we've had just initiatives, got, uh, well on the path, and I think with what we're doing, I do think we're in the right direction. I think we're heading down the right road. But I can't really answer that question for you.
Well, when you, when it was, came to us before and it was thirty percent, you know, I had some reservations at the time, but I thought this is such a bold move. You know, it's bold and it really, I think, will show that we are on top of trying to meet this college and career readiness part. Then, when we're backing off, I, I don't know, I guess I just have some...
Is the plan to move to, like, maybe next year, move it up a little bit, move it up to twenty-five percent or thirty percent, or to do a gradual move with it, to let, let your staff and your students get used to this twenty percent?
Uh, well, that wasn't mentioned, that didn't come out of council meeting, and I, I think in the future it may go back, I don't know. I think there's so much uncertainty, there was a lot of uncertainty on, uh, probably on the minds of some people, uh, that they were afraid, there was conversations, and most of the conversations were geared around, uh, it wasn't so much kids passing, but it was about whether that was going to be an A or a B.
Yes, yeah.
There was a lot of concern over that, how that affects Keys Money.
Which is, that's huge. That's huge. As a parent of three in college and two more going, that's, Keys Money plays a, a huge role in that. Well, I think, I think that it was a bold move, like Judy said, to do the thirty percent, and if it's causing so much concern on the, on the part of your, your, because I don't, I'm not so sure that there was huge amount of buy-in completely, um, certainly not with your parents. Um, if we can do it more of a gradual and work your way back up, and, and then get to the point that, that we are, I mean, we don't want to push them off the deep end.
But another year, it will just be a different set of parents who don't want this to happen to my child. You know, let's wait another year.
You go first.
Well, in my academic career, which spans undergraduate, medical school, I've had testing systems, I had one class where the final was a hundred percent of your grade, and I had other classes where there was no final at all, so. And I've been graded every which way you could possibly think of, objective, subjective, et cetera. But they, at the, at the end of the day, you know, there's a certain amount of content that you need to know. So, that said, um, you know, basing a student's grade on thirty percent, uh, at an end-of-year final, on content and an examination, which is really unknown, I think is, you're right, it's a bold step, but I'm not, I'm not sure, and maybe a little bit too bold. So, and I would hate to say if, all right, you know, something came up, or, you know, gee, we didn't see this standard coming, or, you know, we didn't realize that the test that the kids were going to take was going to put as much emphasis on this. You know, it's not to discount any of the learning that they did during the year, but, you know, you're saying, well, okay, if you went right on the standard, you know, okay, you're, you're not going to do as well as that's what you should. So, I think the twenty percent is a good idea, and it's something that we can move up.
I would like to see, well, I don't think, not us move up. I would like to see you all move it up, gradually, but I'd like to see it move up. I, I think it was bold to do thirty. It obviously was not something that made people overly happy, but I would like to see it move in that direction. That's my personal opinion, that's one board member, one.
I remember back in fifth grade, a long time ago, back when I had hair, having a science course, and I wasn't thirty percent. I had two grades that nine weeks. That's the first D I ever got in my life, because I failed a test. I agree with the other board members, it's the boldest step I've seen we've ever come across. But I remember in college, and, you know, if you get these kids, college, I mean, quote someone else from earlier tonight, we want all, we want, we want high expectations for all students. You know, they want to go to college. Well, you go to college and you, either you're, you're ready for college algebra class or you're not, and you're remedial class, and you get frustrated. You know, those college classes, um, they're not, well, we, we set it at thirty, but we're going to change it to twenty this semester. You know, my, my, this board member's opinion, if you've gone through the first semester and said, you know, we tried thirty, you know, we got a lot of feedback, both positive and negative, we would like to change it back to twenty, and next year set it to twenty-five and gradually raise it up, I can accept that. But go from thirty to twenty before the testing? I, I don't think, that's, that's setting the standard, the high expectations for students.
I'm confused, BJ, you want it to go to twenty or you don't want it to go to twenty?
I don't. I, I still stick with thirty. We made a decision, Sitebase did, we supported it, and I, I said, I suggest we support it now, at thirty.
So leave it at thirty?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I would agree with David as far as the transformation of the high school. The things that are going on there are very, very, the teachers are very focused, and there's some good work coming out of the high school at this point, because I've been with a lot of the teachers at the high school, working with them. And I feel very confident that they are really, really focused and really getting to the, the core of what the kids should know. And this quality core has been really good, wouldn't you agree, David, for the high school? I like that.
The other thing, just to kind of add to it, and this might be something we might have to table, I'm not sure yet, Judy and I have been having like a sidebar here, but, um, at the high school and the district have, we have been talking about grading practices across the board, because we do realize that there's some inequity across our district, and it's a national agenda right now, because we, one of the things that the research is saying is that grading practices is probably one of the major factors of low student achievement. And because people and teachers in schools, in school districts, they decide how they want their grading to look. We have seen for many years that one, one classroom, the teacher may give five assignments and a test. The same course content, and the teacher might give twelve assignments and a test. So you can see that they're teaching the same content, but how they're evaluating students are totally different. So we're having that conversation, it's one of those things that we're researching, we've been talking about it now for about five months. We have had, uh, teachers and staff go to North Carolina to a summit about grading practices. We've had several, uh, board members, actually, two of our board members and, and staff and teachers who attended a summit in Lexington with Tom Buskey, who was the grading practice guru. We sat through that session with him. So it is a conversation we're having. I think it's one of those things that, we've got to look at the big picture, but until then, they have to do something, because the end of the year is coming.
Yep.
Um, Judy and I had some conversation is, is this grading policy and practice under the purview of Sitebase Council, or is it a board purview? And so I'll have to research that. Uh, I don't know if Lewis can help me, he's our coordinator. Uh, is grading practice under Sitebase Council purview?
I will have to research that myself.
Okay. There are certain things that the council has the autonomy to approve, and then we just have to put it in our books. I'm making the assumption that it is probably SPDM purview, but I won't, don't want to say that tonight, so we might have to table this, David?
That's fine. What I'd like to do too is maybe I can get you some information to look at, because I think you guys need to understand, uh, the KDE, the scale score, the KDE send, and how it's translated back. Uh, you need to, you, probably because at some point you'll probably get questions from board members on that, and I would probably like to opportunity to explain that to you, what we did with that, how we translated that.
That's good.
Will you have something ready for the twenty-fourth board meeting? You're going to have to have a decision soon, because you're getting to the end of the course. So will you be ready to bring something back? We can put it on the agenda for the twenty-fourth, for the next week budget meeting? Will you be ready for that?
We already have.
And then we'll still have two readings, we can have one in Jan., uh, at that meeting, and then we can have one at your regular meeting in, uh, February.
Okay, that work? That would be excellent. So a motion is in order to table this matter.
Make motion.
Motion by Ms. Snatkin to table.
I'll second that motion.
Second by Dr. Kudak. Other discussion. Those in favor of tabling the motion, say aye.
Aye.
If you're tabling the matter, say aye. Uh, those opposed, say no. The motion carries five to zero to table the matter until the January twenty-fourth meeting. Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Rosenthal, for your extended time.
She needs a glass of water, water.
You were there an, almost an hour.
Oh, God.
You started at seven-thirty-eight and finished at, well, on the computer at eight-thirty.
If you want to get back up to, Pat, if you want to get back up to Becky's, I'm sure she'll...
I don't want to do her report card.
The next item is to consider approval of the two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve nutrition and physical activity report card. Ms. Lowry.
I believe my time will be much shorter than Ms. Rosenthal's. Um, what you have before you is the two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve nutrition and physical activity report card, where it is my opportunity to report, um, the school meals update and what has been presented to me by the district principals on the physical activity environment. And the way that we get that information on the physical activity environment is a module is sent to all the principals, they complete that for me and they turn it, and then I just basically gather the information and have reported it to you in the report. And also in the report is, um, some other neat things that were going on with physical activity that were given in planning processes as far as what their plans were on how they went to improve certain, um, areas of their physical activity, and also a couple of things that were going on in the schools where they have improved on from last year, and they are doing new things and trying out new ways to incorporate physical activity into the students' day. So I was real happy to see those things in their plans. And the other things that are going on in the report are the nutritional assessment, which, um, we're required to do, it's over a week's, uh, it's a week's menu for elementary schools, so that's where the analysis comes in on the school meals update, and you can see that in there, and, and we do meet all the requirements as far as, um, the calories and the vitamins and minerals that we are required to, um, meet by USDA's guidelines. The other things, um, in here, we, um, wanted to mention some things that are going on in the schools as far as the schools featuring local foods, trying to use more, um, farmer's school items and sub issue. We have been using a grill out of Bourbon County, um, for some of the hydroponic lettuce, and we've been using that, over a couple of weeks we'll get a delivery on that. And then I've also reported on the numbers as far as daily average participation, um, and you'll see there where they have gone up from two thousand and ten to two thousand and eleven to this year. And then something that I didn't have in the report, but I thought you might find interesting is, um, the last data that I could find in Kentucky for two thousand and eight, just to compare our district to, to what they, the last data they had, lunch participation in Kentucky, um, is about seventy-seven percent as, as a state. Um, and so you can see this year ours was eighty percent, and last year it was seventy-seven. For breakfast, Kentucky's is thirty-two, ours last year was thirty-four, and this year is thirty-six. So we are above the state average on our participation. I think that's great, that means our kids want to eat with us, and that means that they're getting a couple of good meals every day. So that, that participation in there means a lot to us. Are there any questions on any of the other information in the report?
Questions for anyone?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So your recommendation, Ms. Ferris?
I recommend that you approve two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve nutrition and physical activity report card.
Motion is in order.
Make the motion.
Question by Mr. Swob.
Second.
Second by Ms. Wool. Other discussion. Those in favor of approving the two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve nutrition and physical activity report as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. We'll put this on the white paper. Thank you, thanks. And, um, Ms. Disney, back with us.
Yes. What you have is, um, each, well, actually every two years, when we go for our continuation agreement with our, uh, family and youth service centers, um, that has to be on the board agenda, an assurance certification, and that's what I'm bringing to you, and if you would not mind, if you wouldn't mind, uh, signing this, and then this goes into our application with the continuation sheet.
Okay. All right. So your recommendation, Ms. Ferris?
Uh, that you approve the family resource and youth service centers' school district assurance certification for a physical year thirteen, fourteen.
Okay. Make a motion. Motion by Ms. Snatkin.
Second.
Second by Mr. Swob. Other discussion. But i- is this just for the one physical year?
Yes, well, actually, yes, it's for that particular physical year, but we work two years in advance.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Um, and then I think Ms. Neitz has the actual sheet, if you would.
Right.
Sign it, and then I have to put, we have to have one original copy, and then I make copies, and it goes in with the continuation sheet that we submit.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries five to zero. Thank you. And Mr. Christie?
It's nice to see Pat up here a lot longer than me, for a change.
You're not finished yet. We may have many questions about these pay applications.
Well, the first one you have before you is the pay application for Codell Construction Company for Resident Observer on the high school site. And again, this time, as in the past, it's $9,375.
Okay. Your recommendation, Ms. Ferris?
Recommend that we approve pay application number eight with Codell Construction Company for Resident Observer in the amount of $9,375.
Motion is in order.
Make the motion.
Motion by Ms. Fatkin.
Second.
Second by Ms. Wool. Other discussion. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. And continuing.
The next one you have on the agenda is the pay application for D.W. Wilburn for General Contracting Services for the new high school project in the amount This one, as you can see, you've got the sheets there in your packet that lists all costs. Some of the bigger ticketed items this time was a lot of lightweight concrete work, fire protection. You're starting to see a lot of that coming in now, and still a lot of machinery work. If you drive up by the site, you're seeing a lot of new brick and block on the sides of it.
Is that true?
Oh, yes.
It's good. And rock.
Still making, makes it work, too.
Yeah.
When's that going to stop, by the way?
I don't know. We got Mr. Mur. I'll let him and Mr. Shaq answer that. We're still making lots of rock right now.
That's every time.
Yeah. But if you're hearing any blasting out there, keep in mind that the city is coming through and putting in some wire lines. You know, that's... I had a call the other day about a blast, and it wasn't on our site for a change.
Other questions related to this? Pay application.
Well, today, because I was home, it would have been thunder, actually.
You told me there was thunder and blasting.
About 5:00 a.m. this morning, there was thunder.
Wow.
Yes.
Okay. Your recommendation, Ms. Ferris?
Recommend that you approve pay application number 14 from the general contractor, D.W. Wilburn, in the amount of $978,569.71.
Motion is in order.
Make the motion.
Motion by Ms. Fatkin.
Second.
Second by Mr. Swob. Other discussion. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries five to zero. Thank you. And continuing.
The next item, I asked Mr. Mur if he'll come up. It's for consider approval of change order number 27. You have all that documentation and everything. Mr. Mur is going to talk with you about that, but if you recall, that was... It's a previous change order that's been discussed at another point in time, and I'll let Ron open it.
Now, I want to be perfectly clear. This is a change order that we had for you in the first initial batch of changers that came in as change order number four. It was not approved that night, and so we moved on. Subsequent to that, we've had several other change orders. But what I would share with you, I guess, or want to add, is that your resident observer that's on site there, Mr. Shaq, he has done an excellent job out there, and part of that was to go back and actually review everything that had taken place on the site. And so he actually brought this back to my attention and asked if Frost Heart would support the idea of bringing this back to the board. I think he's prepared an email that he had sent to Ms. Ferris, and that I don't know if it got forwarded to the board members or not as a part of the packet. But what it essentially involves, and he's here to speak to this tonight also, is that the work that was done by Mr. Philpott in terms of the construction that took place, and this goes all the way back to December and January, December of last year, January this year, was where groundwater collected in some rock excavation that took place out there on the site. When they came back to put in the footing, it was soft as a result of that groundwater infiltration into that trench area. Your special inspector, SMNE, they were the ones that notified us about this, made a recommendation to us. Lath Ross and my office, we went through that process, kind of an extended version, but that Wilburn went ahead and directed Mr. Philpott to do the necessary excavation or to get that bad soils out of the ditch. We put in some additional work in terms of perforated pipe, trench drain, French drain, if you will, to take water out from underneath the footing, so it wouldn't be an ongoing problem for the school. So even at the time when this happened in our first round of change orders, I know it was late that night, a lot of things that had happened, maybe there could have been a better explanation on my part, so I supported the request to bring this back. So I don't know if there's information, or if Herman would like to, you know, also address the board.
Fair ruling. I hope you... Ms. Ferris, you look like you might not have got the email I sent.
I did. I just wanted to make sure they got it. Because I didn't... I had no backup of anybody on it, and I know that it was pretty well discussed the first time, so I was expecting some questions, and when I didn't get it, I went, maybe they didn't get it.
Okay. As I said, this was a situation that I looked at all the change orders that had come about before I arrived on the scene, et cetera, just to bring myself up to date. And discussing this one, it was obvious that the contractor had put out some amount of money, you know, in order to keep the project moving. What happened here was that had this followed the path I think you all were expecting back at that time, you would have probably had a three to four month lapse in work on that wall. And that was the initial work that was being done to get that project underway, was that retaining wall. What they found, to put it simple, was that the water was leaching out of the rock. I found later, as they dug the holes for the... For your wells out there, for the geothermal system, out of 80 wells, there was probably five or six that turned up wet. They were interspersed, they were not, you know, in a common location. So there's definitely throughout that site, some water at different spots that's leaching through that rock. So based on that, I went back and looked at this, I went back and looked at the details of the reports that SMNE had made, and they documented it very well from basically December the 2nd, when it was actually found, until December... January the 7th, when it was actually completely resolved, so that they could go ahead and continue construction. So I felt like that the work they did provided a benefit to the schools, because you possibly could have had a footer there that would crack, walls that would crack. This was in the center of your building. For those that might not understand where it was, if you know how your maintenance and restroom areas are set up in the middle of the building, this would have been the back corner of one of those walls is where this occurred. So it definitely ends up right in the middle of the building with your outer classrooms the way it's set up out there today. So I took it upon myself, you know, to bring it back and say, hey, let's take another look at this, let me address this with the board, and I think this is something that Philpott should be paid for. He put a lot of extra material and time into it. He got it done in a very efficient manner, once a decision was made, because he started on this December the 24th to actually remove all the bad soil. And if you read my email, that's when they finally knew for sure exactly how much was bad, because they just did test pits on the 2nd of December, came back on the 24th, and actually went ahead and excavated till they determined that they were past the bad soil problem. So I just... Like I said, I think I've said enough. Are there any questions?
Hold on one second.
Yes.
Carrie, 16C, page six. I believe that's what you're talking about.
Hmm.
Oh, I haven't...
Fifteen.
Fifteen C, sorry. Now we got mine updated. Page six, scroll down to the bottom. There you go, right there. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes. Yes, that's the... That would be the wall where the... You can see where the wall was blasted away there, where the high wall goes, and a 14-foot wall, I believe it is. And what they had done, now they dug that out there to determine exactly what was bad. Yes.
In the discussion in April, you know, when we had a number of change orders, is this the one that permission was not received for before the work was done?
That is correct.
That was much of the reason for rejecting it, was not getting board approval beforehand?
Right.
Or at least that... In the discussion, that came across, and...
That was... That sounds familiar, so.
And it may have been, and I...
That was the main thing with it, is that this board is kind of responsible for spending all this money and whatever, and then to have a contractor or whomever go and do the work, and then, okay, we'd like to get paid for it, kind of isn't the order in which things happen when the board actually has responsibility for it. And as I remember the discussion, that was one of the main things. Not that we didn't think the work needed to be done, should have been done, might have been done differently or whatever, but it was, you know, the not getting permission. And as in most cases in education, forgiveness is easier than permission, but that was much of the discussion, as I recall, but I've slept since April, so.
And at that point, too, it was at a time that the reason that decision was made, it was definitely holding up construction. We're far enough along in things now that all change orders are coming out further and with more notice to the board to get these things worked out before.
Right.
It puts them in a bad spot on the construction site, which in this case it was, and that was reasonable. They had to do something at that point, because each day that it went, it was becoming a bigger problem and getting worse by day.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I would just go, I mean, on record as saying, I completely understand the discussions we had, and this had been put to rest. I also have no problem with supporting the idea of bringing this back, because just like I said, in April, this was a value-added and additional work that had taken place by the contractor. And I appreciate Herman's investigation and understanding it in that same way, to the point that he was even willing to want to bring that up. He had actually mentioned this earlier, because it was a foreguy, it was a previous item, and we had other change orders that we brought to you, you know, from time to time that were more critical in terms of getting them to you before the work had to be done, and making sure we honored, you know, the chain of events that are supposed to take place. This was one that took place for two reasons. One, they moved on because of the timing, like Herman's indicating, and the second part of it was we were negotiating the price, because we actually spent a great deal of time not allowing some of the items that had been requested, because from our perspective, we felt that was, you know, above and beyond, or inappropriate, or more monies than what could have, should have been spent, or, you know, requests for payment, you know, in terms of just the man-hours or the numbers, you know, that we questioned. So we didn't bring that, you know, to you until after we had all that excavated and the known quantities were there, and then we negotiated and worked on some of those numbers. So fully understand if the board says no. I just, you know, can support this from the standpoint that, you know, have clear conscience in terms of the work that was done to bring the building along the way it's happened over the last year.
And since that time, everything that's been going on out there, Mr. Philpott has been... Sorry, Herman, that has been done in the correct order, correct?
As far as I know, yes.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Let me interject.
Yes.
This area of question, it's got the two floors finished.
That's correct.
It's got the third one, it's three quarters of that point.
No, it's not.
Under roofed?
This area is under roof.
Is it under roof now?
This area is currently under roof, yes.
It's under roof, got plastic, they've got paint on the walls, they've got ceiling grid going in. We are having a coordination meeting tomorrow for both aluminum windows and storefront, and also for terrazzo that's going to start taking place in the hallways. And so they're... This particular change order represents work that was done to facilitate the schedule. And I think that Doug Wilburn would stand before you and say he would do the same thing again, you know, because of necessity, with or without the board ever approving it, because it was going to impact the job to a much larger extent, you know, overall, in terms of, you know, timing, performance, cost to the contractors, all the subs, and so they did it out of necessity.
Our attorney isn't here, this may not be a legal matter, but in some of the documentation, the contractor is called SM and E, and in other documentation, the contractor's called S and M E. Are we approving for S and M E or S M and E?
No, you're approving for Wilburn.
You're approving for Wilburn.
S and M E is...
Is the subcontractor. Yes. And they're the subcontractors?
No.
They're our inspector.
Philpott is the subcontractor for Wilburn that actually came to work.
Yes, okay. So whether it's S and M E or S M and E, is that the same company?
That's the same company. If I did that, I'm sorry, that would have been my fault, but that's your actually on-site inspectors that make sure that building is being built, the building codes and so forth.
Yes.
You pay them separate from your other contractor. As far as I know, it's always them.
This change order is the Wilburn change order.
Yes. Correct. Yes. This is a Wilburn change order.
And SMNE is involved, like Herman says, because they are directly employed by the board. They are your special inspector, they are a geotech firm also that made the investigation and recommendation over the repair, the remediation.
Okay. So are there questions related to this change order? Your recommendation, Ms. Ferris?
I recommend that the board approve change order number 27 in the amount of $16,400 for work completed by D.W. Wilburn Construction Company to remediate unsuitable soils at the New George Rags Court High School project.
A motion is in order.
Make the motion.
Motion by Ms. Fatkin.
Second.
Second by Mr. Swob. Other discussion. Those in favor of approving the change order, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. The rock crusher left yesterday. I'll tell the wife.
Internal Board Business, the first item is to consider approval to attend the 76th Annual KSBA Conference at the golf house in Louisville, February 3rd through the 5th, 2012. This is the annual conference at which board members get their required... Some or most of their required, or sometimes all of their required, training hours for the year. Any questions or discussion about that? Does everyone plan to go? Ms. Ferris, will you be there as well?
Our leader, the Carriers.
I will not be there.
Oh, you won't be there?
No. All right. So are there questions or comments about that? Okay. A motion is in order to approve for the...
Make the motion.
Board team attendance. Motion by Ms. Fatkin.
Second.
Second by Mr. Swob. Other discussion. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. The next item is the discussion of the teacher recognition program that we have or might have, or whatever.
You guys were teaming up, so I didn't know.
This is... This was a suggestion of Mr. Swob, so since he owns this item...
No, I'm not... I'm not going to stand up.
Let him start the session.
I'll hold him back in, so I get the luxury of sitting down. One thing I do not like about the district is they don't have... State computers do not allow Yahoo email to come up, so I'm going to read off my phone, so I apologize. This question started back in January 1st, as part of the month. A simple question to Elaine. Elaine. It said, does the district have in place a program that honors teachers on a monthly basis? I know we have had teachers come up in front of the board before to be honored, but is it on a monthly slash quarterly basis? If we don't, would it be in the board's best interest to acknowledge teachers that go above and beyond their job and reach out to all children, no matter what their background? Could we have the principals nominate the teachers and allow the council of councils decide who the best teacher of that month quarter is? I personally think it would be, excuse me, I personally think it would be a good public relations move, not only to, not only with the staff, but with the community as well. Would you like me to read your response, Elaine?
I'll discuss it first.
Okay.
Okay, so what's the feeling of the group regarding the type of recognition that Mr. Swob has?
Are we gonna continue to do our, our one that we did, I can't remember when we did it, because.
Well, like, the four that we do at the end of the year in April that recognizes teachers in different areas.
Are we gonna, is our plan to continue to do that? All right, my concern about doing something monthly is that it would take away from what we do with those teachers in April, because from everything that I've heard about, about that, and principals could correct me if I'm wrong, is that that was a big deal. That was a huge deal. And when we only honor four, or was it four, just four? However many we honor.
There were some in each, there were four categories.
But when we only honor that few, that few, in that timeframe, it puts a great amount of value on it. When we start honoring every month, it kinda loses its, you know, its, its honor.
Yeah, it's honor, be honest.
You know, it doesn't, it doesn't, it, yeah, I gotta go to that board meeting because they're gonna give me something, instead of, I get to go in April because I'm, I'm getting an award and it's a big deal. I want it to be a big deal. It needs to be a big deal. That's just my, that's my opinion.
I have a question. I'm sorry, I have a question as a parent. What if we had an individual, a teacher, I mean, like, in my circumstance, and not taking the earlier conversation, other teachers, in Colton's life and in Dalton's life as well, that, and DJ, when he was in ECDC, that made a remarkable difference in their life, especially for Dalton had teachers reach out to him as a kid that was sandwiched between two special needs kids, which was a very important time when my mother died. When a parent has that kind of interaction and commitment from a teacher, it means a great deal, as you know, being a parent. We don't have a way to express that. I had made suggestions for teachers in the past to be brought just before the board just to say, this person made the difference particularly in a special needs child's life. And this was Colton, and it was about twenty teachers, I mean, almost, it was about twenty teachers that I had a list of that, just because of what was going on in our world at that time with the Phoebe Prince and all those kids being, with what's going on right now, I mean, DJ has a story of, I don't know if you've heard about a kid in Connecticut where they have a scream room for special needs kids, that they're locking these kids in there, and they're cleaning up feces and urine and blood, and people are hearing that. They don't do that at stroke stations. When they heard DJ screaming, his teachers weren't locking him in there. Alice Pedeman pulled Dalton out of class and said, go see if you can help, because he could do that. That's what our teachers are doing. We need those teachers recognized for that, because what's happening out there, particularly in my experience for special needs kids, can become a national phenomenon, because that's what everybody's hearing. We don't want our teachers to ever say, it's okay to have a scream room. Nobody acknowledges if you don't. Let's go the opposite way and reach out to teachers in a special manner. So I understand, I agree completely, we don't want it to be mundane, absolutely not. But what are the opportunities for a parent to be able, and I realize sometimes it's not going, it's not going to be a possible thing, I understand that, I'm just saying, it would have been nice to have had many opportunities to have some teachers really be recognized for what they've done, and I think it would mean a lot to the community, because our community needs to see, it's not all bad. We don't want our community coming in here like tonight on bad. We need our community and our board to be communicating for good. That is our message to our kids. We want our kids to know what you say, what you do, make a temper.
Can I respond to all that? In reference to a teacher in a building, you can always go to the principal and talk to the principal and let the principal address that.
And I have. But sometimes I just like the community as a whole, you know, and if the board.
You could always, and you could always write a letter to the, to the editor.
Well, if the board, you know, we have the newspaper come in and take pictures, which my thought, we make it a big deal then.
Sometimes you have to be very careful that, that we don't get into a popularity contest.
I agree.
So, but that, that's my opinion about.
I respect your opinion. When I see teachers in my office, I offer them thanks, because I appreciate the job that they're doing. I don't envy them at all. I've seen their job and I don't want it. If I've seen mine, I probably don't want mine either.
That's good, that's good, you do that. More community leaders need to do that, yeah.
Okay, other comments or questions for board members about this matter?
I was bringing it up in front of us, just a way to emphasize, reemphasize how much, now, I'm gonna speak on myself, but I'm assuming that you all agree, how much we appreciate the teachers and the principals and everyone who touches each kid's lives in this community. You know, as our way of saying thank you, that was my initial thought.
Okay, so any further action required on this?
No.
Just to, are you okay with the current, with keeping the current recognitions that we have in place? And, you know, even, sometimes monthly, the principals do bring, you know, special things, you know, that someone on the staffs have done for that kind of recognition, so we've had that in the past. So I think some of this is already in place for, for those sorts of things. And parents can always, you know, do those special thank you's like Dr. Mike does, who's not a parent but has lots of kids. The next item involves the consent agenda items. The first set of consent agenda items deal with school trips. Are there questions or comments about any of the school trip-related items? If not, a motion is in order to approve the following school trips. The GRC varsity cheerleaders' trip to Bowling Green, Kentucky, to participate in state KPOS cheerleading competition, February seventeenth through the nineteenth. Approval of the GRC FFA trip to Lawrenceburg, Indiana, for the annual trip to Perfect North on February twenty-third, two thousand twelve. The GRC marching band trip to Cincinnati, Ohio, to participate in the guard competition, March tenth and eleventh, two thousand twelve. Approval of the GRC marching band trip to Bowling Green, Kentucky, to participate in percussion competition, March seventeenth and eighteenth. Approval of the GRC marching band trip to Atlanta, Georgia, to participate in invitational band concert, April twentieth through twenty-second. Approval of the GRC orchestra trip to Cincinnati, Ohio, to perform Beethoven's Pastoral Symphony on February twenty-fourth, two thousand twelve. GRC softball trip to Paintsville, Kentucky, to participate in the Johnson Central Softball Classic, March twenty-third and twenty-fourth. And GRC softball trip to Clarksville, Tennessee, to participate in softball tournament, April fifth through the eighth. Questions about any of those trips? When is the ACT?
March sixth.
Sixth, okay, because when I saw that March ninth and tenth, I wasn't sure if that were confirmed. Okay, all right. A motion is in order to approve those trips.
Make the motion.
Motion by Ms. Thacken.
Second.
Second by Ms. Wolf. Other discussion? Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries five to zero. Are there questions about any of the reports that need to be acknowledged? A motion is in order to acknowledge the cash position report, the Clark County Sheriff's Motor Vehicle Tax Report, the Clark County Sheriff's Report, the monthly financial report, the general fund budget summary report, quarterly detailed school budget reports, quarterly detailed district budget reports, and the notice of personnel action report. A motion is in order.
Make the motion.
Motion by Ms. Thacken.
Second.
Second by Mr. Swob. Other discussion? Those in favor of acknowledging the aforementioned reports say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say no?
No.
Motion carries three to two.
What aren't we acknowledging?
Personnel.
Cash position report, the.
No.
There was, presented as a group, so the group. Group.
Okay, what do we need to pull out?
Well, the motion carries three to two.
What, what do we have an issue with?
Personnel action report. Second.
Slippery slope, man.
The motion carries three to two, with Ms. Thacken, Ms. Hicks, Ms. Wolf voting in favor of the motion, with Dr. Kudak and Mr. Swob voting against the motion. A motion is in order to authorize payment of salaries and accounts payable.
I'll make that one.
Motion by Dr. Kudak.
Second.
Second by Ms. Thacken. Other discussion? Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion carries five to zero. Thank you. A motion is in order to adjourn.
Make the motion.
Motion by Ms. Thacken.
Second.
Second by Ms. Wolf. Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries five to zero, and we are adjourned at nine oh seven PM.